Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilors. My name is Cherie Warger and Downtown Revitalization Manager. And it is with great pleasure and pride in the work of the Downtown Advisory Board, we bring you the Downtown Strategic Action Plan this evening. This is a work session only and will not require you to take any action. We are going to provide you with some brief background comments, have Leland Consulting Group give an overview of the plan, have closing remarks from Downtown Advisory Board Subcommittee members, and allow time for questions. On March 8th, the Agency approved the funding from Riverfront Downtown Urban Renewal Area Funds to pursue a Downtown Strategic Action Plan. A Subcommittee of Downtown Advisory Board Members comprised of Mayor Peterson, Jim Bauer, Dana Bugdebrin, and Brian Moore participated in five work sessions to guide the development of this plan. Their support and contributions were invaluable to the process. In the audience this evening, I also want to recognize Alan Pollak and Carol Smith, who are also Downtown Advisory Board Members. I hope I didn't miss any. Oh, Mr. Bill Putney is also here. The Downtown Strategic Action Plan will provide a tool to guide future public investments through actions and activities. In order for these activities to be funded with tax increment dollars, they must be identified as a project in the Riverfront Downtown Urban Renewal Plan. This Downtown Strategic Action Plan is intended to be a living document that staff will review and update with the Agency Board each year and does not replace the Riverfront Downtown Urban Renewal Plan. At the February 14th Agency Board Meeting, there will be three actions regarding the Downtown Strategic Action Plan for your consideration. Adoption of the plan that you're going to be reviewing tonight, funding requests for a much-needed downtown traffic and mobility study, and funding requests for a North Downtown investment strategy. These projects are designed to mitigate market risk, leverage public investment, and facilitate development in downtown. I'm now going to turn over the session to Chris Sahas, Principal with Leland Consulting Group, for an overview of the findings and recommendations.
Thank you, Cherie. Again, my name is Chris Sahas. I was Project Manager throughout the study and working with the DAB. Also not here from Leland Consulting Group is Tina Moska. She helped with a lot of the analysis. And we also partnered, as you can see on the screen, with OTAC, who helped us with some infrastructure analysis and some of the urban design. I have what will hopefully be a brief presentation. I'm going to hit some of the highlights of our research and highlights of the projects that are part of the action plan, and then we'll open it up for questions after the closing So as we were, when we first met, when we first got started with the project, we were kind of given some direction from the DAB on what the purpose of this plan is. And first of all, again, as Cherie said, it's not to replace the existing urban renewal plan, but it's to give it some focus and identify strategic projects, building upon the past, and incorporating a couple key criteria, and the most important of which is leverage. And leverage meaning attracting private investment, whether that's housing, employment, or other uses into the downtown. And then getting very specific about the project so that this can become a real implementation plan and budgeting plan for the district. The core of the work took place from June through November. We did a lot of research. We met with a lot of stakeholders and a couple key events, people, property owners, business owners, neighborhood representatives, and other people with a big stake in the downtown. We did a review of existing infrastructure plans and assessments from city staff. We conducted a market analysis to better understand where the market is headed, not just looking at today's economy, but looking forward. And then we held a planning workshop where we started working with the DAB Subcommittee to identify what are some of the emerging strategies, giving us focus, that we can drill down into the actual projects that we prioritized and budgeted. So let me hit on a couple of the key findings that we found through the research phase. And the first one is, we had a lot of findings around transportation and circulation. It goes without saying that that's probably one of the most visible and significant challenges to development in downtown Salem. And it seemed like everything that we talked about, that was brought up in meetings and other types of projects, all kind of hinged on transportation and circulation issues had to be solved before those types of projects could move forward. Everything from the high-traffic flows to parking issues to bridge access, uncertainty about the future bridge, bicycle and pedestrian access was particularly significant, as well as just overall downtown circulation. And so that was highlighted as one of the biggest barriers to implementation. The second part was, we did a market analysis, and we looked at the existing downtown and the business mix, as well as looking at some of the future, prognosticating towards the future about what the economy might bring and what some of the demographic shifts are. And one of the very striking things that I found, particularly having worked in a lot of downtowns, is that you actually have a very healthy downtown. And I can't think of another community of your size that has this list of anchor department stores. And that's a real strong achievement. And the flip side of that is, with the economy the way it is, and with some of the shifts that we're seeing in the retail industry, is that it's also a very fragile mix that you have right now. And I think there's a big risk that should any one of these anchors close and leave your downtown, that could be a real blight on the downtown. It could, something that could take perhaps 10 years or more for the market and the reputation of downtown Salem to recover. So one of the first orders of business that we saw was, make sure that you preserve and enhance the assets that you have right now. Other economic things, there's a whole market study that's a part of the appendices to your packet, but just one of the key ones I think that's worth mentioning is that we all hear about the baby boom generation that in 2011 is the first ones are turning 65 and nearing retirement. And this chart here just shows you how the population over age 65 is going to grow in the future. And that has tremendous implications to every community across the country, but particularly in regards to downtowns, is as the retiring baby boomers begin to change their lifestyles, they're going to have housing preference changes. And as we know, housing is one of the key drivers of downtown revitalization. And so we see this as an opportunity to tap into in order to increase that residential population downtown. What I don't have here up on the screen is the mirror to the baby boom generation is what we call the echo boomers or the Generation Y. And that's actually even a larger group of population than the baby boomers. And those are people who are, the younger people in their twenties, who are beginning to enter their first-time home-buying years, and are more likely to be renters and homebuyers given the economy. And so that's the second major driver of housing growth. And I think that bodes really well for downtowns. And the bottom line is, this is just a quote that the Urban Land Institute put out in their 2011 forecast, and they surveyed 875 real estate experts, from bankers to developers to contractors across the country. And the consensus was, one of the key messages is, that downtowns and really active vital 24-hour neighborhoods is where it's at. And that's where those demographic trends, the market trends are going to be strongest, particularly in the short term, as we emerge from the recession. So that's all good news. Some of the physical conditions that we found, you know, there's some great assets in your historic district. It's one of the reasons people come to downtown Salem, and that's been managed really well. And you have a lot of great historic resources to build upon. You do have some physical transportation issues with the wide streets and the traffic flow that's a challenge for pedestrians. We mentioned that. And the, back to the historic buildings, one of the challenges is that we know is that historic buildings are often not very well-suited to modern business uses, whether that's retail on the ground floor. Retail space tends to be shrinking now. They don't need 100-foot-deep old buildings. And oftentimes, we find that historic buildings need a lot of work and reconfiguration to make them usable for modern uses. And so that's one area where urban renewal has come into play in the past, and we think that's an ongoing need to make sure that the historic district stays active and the buildings stay full. So we did all that research, and we met with the DAB and discussed what are the implications of it. And what emerged was, is this strategy that's illustrated on the graphic. And I'll explain it really, really quickly here. The reasons for the different colors on the map and breaking it down into what we called investment areas is because the issues and the challenges that face downtown are not the same in all parts of downtown Salem. It is a large area that encompasses a lot of different neighborhoods and sub-districts. For example, on Historic Core, as we mentioned, the issues there are largely around how to make these old historic buildings stay full and attractive for modern-day uses. There's not a lot of vacant land down there, and so the opportunity for new infill is much more limited than it will be in some of the other areas. The Midtown area in blue is centered around Salem Center. That's your core, your retail core, and has its own challenges in terms of maintaining that vital retail core, activating some of the blank walls that are on some of the bigger buildings. And it's also where the bridges touch down and has its own particularly significant transportation issues. Riverfront Park, it's a fantastic asset. We saw lots of opportunities to build upon that, to make it even more of a destination that will draw people, not just to the park, but also to have the spillover effect to nearby businesses, and to have that be an activity that draws people downtown frequently. So it's not just once or twice a year, but it might be once or twice a week. The North Waterfront District, which is highlighted in purple along Front Avenue, Front Street, it's an area that a lot of interest has been focused there for revitalization. We found that the market is really not quite ready for a lot of redevelopment there in the next, say, three to five years. And it's also challenged by the uncertainty that's posed by the third bridge crossing. Until that gets settled, there may or may not be future impacts in there. Long-term vision is to be determined, and there's a project in the action plan that addresses that. And the one area that I want to, that there's a lot of focus on in the strategy is the North Downtown, highlighted in yellow. And the reason that emerged is, it's a relatively underdeveloped part of downtown. There's a lot of low-intensity uses, lower land values, yet it's just a matter of blocks to the downtown core. And we saw that as one of the strong opportunities to create a real urban neighborhood that could build the residential base in downtown, that would, on the one hand, attract people who would become retail shoppers, as well as downtown workers. And it's the place where you can get a cluster of housing in one concentrated area, rather than some of the dispersed infill that you've seen so far.
Which area was that?
That's what's, this yellow is the North Downtown. So it's kind of centered around the creek and extends up there. So as we had all those project areas, we started brainstorming projects, and we used the criteria that we in the DAB established, which is about leveraging, supporting housing growth in downtown, preserving, enhancing that retail, and then looking for projects that create partnerships so that you can not just leverage money, but you can leverage the human capital and the organizational capital. And so what I'm going to do now, obviously you can't read this on the screen, but this is the matrix of projects and budgets that are as a part of the action plan. I'm going to go and highlight a couple of the key projects, and then end in hopefully 10 minutes, so we have plenty of time for discussion. The projects in the action plan are broken down into a couple main categories. The first one is circulation and access, and that just echoes the findings that we found about the transportation issues that sort of get in the way of anything else moving forward. So the first project that's recommended, and one that you'll be considering next month, is a circulation, access, and transportation mobility study. And this would be a comprehensive transportation study that would evaluate all modes of transportation, internal and external and accessing downtown, from the pedestrians, cars, bicycles, and so on. The budget is to be matched with some money from Public Works. And the plan would ideally evaluate all of these issues comprehensively to identify implications on land use, what new circulation patterns, do certain streets need to change in emphasis, how is that going to impact where we focus housing development, retail development, and so on. And then it'll identify, I'm sure, a list of capital projects that will make improvements to the downtown. So in the mid and long term, under this category, a potential outcome is a downtown shuttle or circulator. That's to be determined because the circulation study would need to recommend that. But because it's a project that's been mentioned many times in prior plans, we wanted to put a placeholder for that, just in case it emerges. And then knowing that there will be capital projects that emerge out of the mobility study, the budget has programmed out into year five and beyond, some money reserving that, knowing that there will be capital projects to be built. The second major category is, we called it Activating City Streets. And this deals with the pedestrian realm and basically the ground-floor business realm, which is how most people experience downtowns, and especially yours. The first project is what we call the Demonstration Block Program. And the reason for this is, it's about leverage and it's about critical mass. The Demonstration Block is a combination of implementing tools such as the Toolbox Program, storefront improvements, business loans. And the Demonstration Block, the purpose behind that is to not necessarily make those tools available downtown-wide, but to, on a yearly basis, pick a block and focus as many of those grants and loans and investments into that one block as you possibly can, so that you get a critical mass, and it creates a real dynamic visible change on the street that will fill the buildings, get the property owners engaged, and get the storefronts filled. And that, the DAB, through a process that, based on criteria, would move that Demonstration Block over the years. Similar to that, or related to that, which is a streetscape improvement program, and we know you're working on some of the streetscapes right now with the transportation investments, but there's always a need to improve the streetscape and to possibly focus that with the Demonstration Block Program. And in addition to all of that, is to maintain the Toolbox Program. It's been a very successful program in the past, and we think that that's, it's a real critical, high-leverage, you get matching money from the property owners, and so it's an immediate positive investment that revitalizes your buildings. And so that would be something to continue throughout the next 10 years. Now, I mentioned at the end of that graphic, the North Downtown Neighborhood, that's the yellow neighborhood at the north end, this is the residential opportunity. There's a lot of work to be done to actually make that change happen. The first step would be a housing investment strategy. And that is another one of the projects that you'll be considering next month. The idea behind that is that there's a lot of internal circulation issues, market-related issues, developer-related issues that need to be explored and solved before we can be sure what the immediate next steps are. But we estimate that that district could accommodate upwards of 800 housing units and create a net tax increment value of about $136 million on top of what the valuation of that district is today. So there's a real big opportunity to move that idea forward. The study would include a market study to identify targeted housing types, income ranges, product mixes, locations, possibly targeted property acquisition sites, and other capital public investments that would be, that would sort of set the foundation to create the place that would make it someplace that developers would want to build and people would want to live. Beyond that plan, I mentioned property acquisition. So we've set aside some money to, based on how that housing strategy evolves, have some money to acquire some key sites that would become catalyst projects, much like what you've done on Broadway, to RFP out to developers at some point, bring in some quality housing into the immediate neighborhoods. And in addition to that, perhaps on properties the city did not acquire, but just general private developments, create a housing opportunity fund to partner with the private sector, public-private partnerships, and focus projects that either address some of the challenges of developing, whether it's perhaps issues related to the creek and access and water issues, or part of the areas in a floodplain, for example, parking issues, public spaces, plazas, sidewalks, infrastructure, and so forth. The next major category of projects was leveraging underutilized assets. That was one that was really strongly pushed by the DAB, recognizing that there's a lot of money and a lot of projects that are already in place and that perhaps aren't performing to their best. I mentioned the Riverfront Park. One of the key projects there would be to build a recreation or commercial facility, perhaps a boathouse, that's been planned, right at the park. And that would have a couple major benefits. One, it would create some more active use out of this asset that's already sitting there in place. But it would be something that would draw people to the waterfront on an ongoing basis if there's crew teams or people exercising, going on perhaps tourist-related boat rentals and so forth. You could see how people coming to that part of downtown would spill out into the rest of downtown and that. And there's also potential to partner with other organizations, such as Lamont, in this project. The bridge to Minto Island is one that's already being planned. Again, another huge asset. Right now, you have to go, what, a couple miles upstream to get to the island, which is, you know, your huge city park and a great asset. The bridge, setting aside money to help build the bridge, would, again, anchor Riverfront Park in downtown as one of the great open spaces and public spaces in the city that will pay dividends through the visibility and access that it provides. And finally, there were a couple longer-term leverage opportunities. The first is exploring in more detail down the road how to better utilize the underutilized parking in the Marion Parcade. We know that parking, particularly structured parking, costs anywhere from $15,000, $20,000, $30,000 per parking space, and there's, I think it's hundreds of spaces that are available right there. And that's an immediate equity, immediate incentive that could be provided, either for a developer on that site or in the immediate surrounding blocks. So a placeholder's been put into the action plan to do that. And the second major leveraging opportunity is the Marion Square Park. We heard a lot of comments in our interviews and in our reconnaissance about how it's, one, it's physically challenged by all the bridge and the street access, but it's also a little bit dark, a little bit scary. We think that with some improvements, this park could be a huge asset for the emerging residential neighborhood on the north end of downtown, as well as to the downtown itself. It's about, it's a little over three acres, which is actually a very significant green space to be that close to the heart of the downtown. And we think with some work that would become a part of some study and then capital improvements, it could really rise to its potential. And so the final major category was about that North Waterfront investment area. It was the purple area on your map. Similar to the North Downtown housing area, there's some more research and analysis that's needed. We think this is more of a midterm project based on market conditions. And it would be a similar study and strategy, exploring the market and economic issues about redevelopment. What are the targeted land uses, and are there key properties that should be acquired to preserve opportunities for redevelopment? In the mid to the long term, we already know that there's some significant infrastructure issues there that need to be addressed, not the least of which is the railroad going down the middle of the street. If any of you saw the presentations made by the University of Oregon students back in December where they were studying this area, a lot of them suggested maybe moving the railroad out of the middle and over to one of the sides of the streets. That's going to cost a lot of money, but it may be just what it takes to create that development opportunity and remove that barrier. So we want to put a placeholder several years out, so that when that answer is specified in detail, we've got money set aside, ready to act upon it. And finally, this is the last slide of the presentation. We talked about, Cherie mentioned in her introduction, that this is a living document. This is focused on the short term, kind of the one-to-three-to-five-year timeframe, very detailed about year one, next year's budget. A year from now, we would expect staff in the DAB to coming back to you with a similar meeting, saying, here's what's been accomplished this past year, here's how we may change or tweak some of our priorities for the next five-year cycle. And it continues to move in sequence like that. I have a picture of your quarterly up there, because that's actually a really, one of the best examples that I show other communities, actually, of how you document progress on And it would be something similar to that, that we would suggest cataloging and tracking your progress on these projects throughout the year. So with that, I'll conclude the presentation, and I think Dana and Jim have a couple closing comments before we open up questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that very complete report from you.
Thanks. I hope I didn't go too fast. There was a lot to cover.
Yeah, that's good. That's good. Yes, thank you.
This public speaking thing. I just want to take a brief moment to thank the Agency Board and City Council for their support to the DAB as we've gone through the past year, going through some very intensive meetings, reviewing, discussing with stakeholders. The Leland Group, I think, has done an excellent job of helping us keep ourselves focused in a direction where we can develop a useful tool for the DAB and the Agency Board to make critical decisions, how to best leverage the funds available in our urban renewal area. I think some of these projects that we alluded to that will be discussed next month are critical as the first steps moving forward to be able to determine. Does the rest of the steps make sense if we don't do this part? As an example of circulation, so I'm not going to labor for too long, because hopefully we have some questions regarding it. But I think it's been a great exercise that provides the ability to help provide useful, proactive, and strategic recommendations to the Agency Board, rather than being reactive and piecemealing, doling out of the funds in an incremental manner that we've done in the past. Well, that, pass to Jim.
I also just want to echo our thanks for your support.
I think we want you on the microphone, please.
Echo the support, and thanks for your support. This is a difficult task for any group of citizens that come together and try and figure out how to prioritize what are about a million ideas. This is, I think, when we describe it as a living document, we also imagine that it's a document that starts with a set of ideas that will hopefully stimulate other ideas. And that we, although there are some prescriptive ways to get started and some action items that are ahead, it also allows for us to start creating a canvas that other people are going to bring different colors to, a different way of, a different perspective, and hopefully act off of these and push this thing around a little bit, so that we can get some ideas that have energy and funding behind them. I mean, if you could take anything away from the work that's done so far, there are a couple of things that are takeaways. Our focus, we hope our focus and your direction to us will be to work on leverage, because that's what our focus has been so far. If you go to this study and you look at pages like, oh, the page nine, which is an example of leverage in Salem, the work that you've already done, Broadway Town Square, YWCA, Broadway Commons, these are, these are great examples of projects that came one way, but they did attract private investment that improved Salem. And we know there's, when you do that, they have more vitality. I mean, they just simply do. There's more people moving the rock. Those are hard rocks to move. If you have leverage, if you have energy behind it, then I think people would feel very satisfied that our due diligence of using the public's money yields something that's very valuable. And so we want to kind of adopt that as our strategy. We want people to feel like we're watching out for that, and I hope that that would be in your best interest. That is our plan. Another picture of this that is important is that we want to find a way to create connections that are very hard to do. And if you look at this in the whole, there are, it draws connections and correlations. There is the attempt here to start to organize this in a way that people understand. And I think that if anything, we were looking for methods to draw, let's just say, the north part, like the investment in Broadway, into the center part. People's interpretation of downtown, I think, is often about the historic core. I mean, that's their, one of the jokes, which I'm sure you guys, it's kind of a Where's Waldo joke, which is, where's the center of downtown? Well, it just depends on what you consider the boundaries are. But in terms of people's access, we have to find ways to bring it in, and that anybody can create any center they want, as far as, how far out do you go is a big question. And we have made a stab at it. We've thrown the dart at the board, and you can see at that north end how this plan and this project will bring that into the center. We obviously have a boundary on the south side as well because of the Urban Renewal District, but the plan is to find ways to connect that. We saw, you all We saw, you all have seen, the gaps. A great deal of investment in one area, and then a void, and then a great deal of investment again. So how do we leverage that as well? So that the leverage theme kind of continues. And I promise I'll get off the soapbox here in a second, but you didn't give me the. So the last piece is on, just to point out, is in the OTAC study, which is at the end, and it's like pages three to five. But we've talked about this before, and I just wanted to bring it up again, that there are all of these, two, three, pages two, three, and four, all of these overlays, all of these things that make it very hard for developers to figure out what to do. And we want to unlock that. We would like to maybe change some of that, but we don't have enough pieces right now. And that's why we're back to you asking for more money to be spent on this, because we ran into that with an earnest intent to change that. And then we ran into the transportation issue, and it is, it's a Rubik's Cube. I mean, you all know it better. You live it, we're just seeing a piece of it, but somehow, we've got to get past this. You can't add creativity to this process without figuring out what that's going to be and what we need to do. That's, I mean, if, it was just like running into a brick wall. And it's not any staff's fault, it's just simply, there's too many pieces to the issue of transportation to be able to encourage anybody to do anything. Why would you if there is unknowns and unforeseen? So that is another piece of this, that we wanted to make sure you saw, that you understood. And I think from our perspective, we consider that to be some of the first order of business. If you can't figure out how to make these connections in a way that absorbs some of the creativity and also kind of gets people who are interested in making private investment to feel more safe about taking the first step, then we can't really move some of this forward, or we'll have to spend a whole lot more money along the way to fix something in a less-than-strategic way, in just a tactical solution way. So that's my two cents.
Great.
Well, that's my thirteen cents.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I see hands flying up left and right, and now I don't know who had their hand up first, so. Diane, Counselor Dickie, and then Counselor Clem, and then Counselor Bennett. Is that it? Let's get started. Okay.
Okay, I have a question and a comment. First, just logistically, I'm looking at the map, and I'm trying to kind of figure out where it is that the, kind of the north downtown transitions with the midtown. Can you give me an approximation of what street that is so I can have a visual?
It's, shoot, what's one, we have those white areas, kind of what we call mixed-use transition zones. These are, this is conceptual, so it's not necessarily, it's whatever it is, one block north of Liberty. It's one block north of the bridge.
Okay, but I'm going north.
Oh, going north?
Yes.
At the edge of the Urban Renewal District?
Well, these are.
The blue, the transition.
It's Union. Is that, is it Union?
Oh, is it Union?
It's north of Union.
Just the next one.
Yeah. Okay, so maybe the next.
Would be the railroad bridge.
Okay.
Oh, that's more.
I think it's further north.
Courtney thinks it's Division.
It seems.
This street right in here that I'm highlighting on the.
Correct.
Right where the word is.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, and just a comment, you know, I really appreciate you guys kind of looking at the transportation piece of it and how it fits, because I know, you know, my word, I mean, we're out in the far-flung edges of Salem, and I can beat to the Woodburn Outlet Mall as quickly as I can beat to downtown Salem. I can beat to Kaiser Station much quicker than to downtown Salem. And so really finding ways to connect, you know, the edges of Salem to downtown, to, you know, what will draw people to say, I'm going to downtown Salem instead of, you know, Woodburn or, you know, somewhere else, just really, I appreciate you guys looking at that, and I hope that, you know, we can find some solutions to that, because I know that that can be a challenge.
Yeah. And one of the reasons for getting partnering money from Public Works for the study is so that, the Urban Renewal money is limited to what's inside this boundary here, and we know the issues and the areas on the map go outside of that. So the study itself would expand beyond that study area for that very reason.
Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you guys for serving and for a great study, Chris.
Thank you.
I just want to confirm on page 12, what we're talking about approving or at least considering in your next budget. We're talking about funding that study for that north downtown area. And, Chris, is this your table or is this?
Yeah, we put the table together, but it represents the consensus of the DAB.
Okay, got it. So DAB's had a chance to tweak this. So in year one, eleven, twelve, you'd spend 1.68 on those projects and those, where does the north downtown, this study that you're talking about, sharing with Public Works, point that out for me if you could. Is that actually the investment strategy?
That's the, the investment strategy is the analysis that will, to identify the market and the opportunity sites and future capital improvements that would be needed to create that residential.
Okay, so we're going to spend $200,000 to study that area, right?
Correct. And then, and then there's, then we also have right below that budget set aside for some property acquisitions to capture some opportunity sites.
Yeah, that's really sort of the focus of my question, if I could, Madam Mayor. What worked on Broadway was a perfect storm of a number of things, but really a developer taking a whole lot of risk, and the city having acquired the property. So property acquisition, in my mind, is the greatest reason for the success and the leverage that we've had, or at least that the city or the agency took. So those property acquisition dollar amounts don't look like there are enough to buy a couple parking spots. So how soon, here's the question that Sheree will cringe on. How soon can we float a bond for how many million to really get in the business of urban renewal in that north downtown area?
Sheree, do you want to, I think it was like three or four years out, but.
Sheree would come back with that answer to that question after talking to her budget analyst, if I could.
Yeah. And that's where I think Jim and Dana said, and that's what we're really talking about here. But in my mind, I'm not crazy about the study, but I'm crazy about property acquisitions, because if the city didn't own those properties out on Broadway, there would still be, you know, what isn't there now?
Yeah. In the notes to the table in the fine print, we went on the assumption that these projects would be paid for through the cash flow essentially for the first three years. And I believe, based on the numbers we got from the finance department, that around year four, that would be an opportunity to do some bonding.
Is it possible, Sheree, to get information from you next time we get a brief up on this?
I would be happy to bring back the answer to your question.
Okay, thank you.
We were, we resent the fact that we have to do more studies in order to do the right thing. Believe me, we did not go into this with that intent at all, but there, we can't figure, if there's any ideas that can come to the table that are easier than that and that are, that will give us the kind of answers that people are willing to bank on, that, we're open to that. But, and we clearly were like, is there any way to get out of this? But there doesn't seem to be. I mean, we, people want credible information if they're going to invest money, and they want to know that we have an answer to some of these questions that we'll all agree to or that, you know, all of the people who are going to be working on this together can move forward with.
Yeah.
I think, I think Counselor Bennett is next.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a couple of questions. First, this is just a really interesting plan. I'd seen it earlier and had a chance to go through it. And the thing that I found really helpful about it is that it is, while global, it also takes it on in some bite-sized pieces. I mean, that it looks at it in the way you've broken up downtown and then talked about the kind of projects we could be working on. And I hope that when you do your transportation plan, it follows that same kind of spirit, because it really, getting your head around downtown, I mean, having listened to it like everyone else for years and decades, it is helpful to see it now broken out into pieces and then into doable projects. One of the things you mentioned relative to the north waterfront was the question of the bridge landing. And I wondered if, I mean, at some point here, pretty soon, we're going to come up with some clarification on that. Will that clarification be of substantial assistance in developing interest, or is it as, you mentioned it as a barrier. I just wondered how big a barrier it is.
It's one of several barriers to that district. It's certainly a significant one. I kind of think of it as a big question mark hanging over it. But some of the other barriers are just the immediate access, the way front kind of curves around, just getting into, getting in and out of that district is a challenge, and it needs some further strategizing of how to overcome it. And then there's all those infrastructure.
And the railroad.
And the railroad, got it.
Yeah.
Right. And we saw that, given market conditions, there's sort of some higher prioritized opportunities in the housing market in particular, in the north downtown, which is why we, and with the limited amount of money to prioritize with, that's sort of why the north waterfront got kind of positioned where it is in terms of, it's maybe a midterm opportunity rather than an immediate one.
One of the short-term opportunities that I've been concerned about is, and I don't know if it's in here, I didn't see it, but I'll just bring it up, is parking in north downtown currently, that there is a, kind of a remedial action needed, where we encouraged, you know, we encouraged development out on Broadway, and then we had the leveraging occur, but had not fulfilled sort of the basic infrastructure needs of, and then I can, you know, of Cristos and Maynard's, and even across the street at Dave Glennie's project, they've had a couple of times where they had issues of parking because of the parking requirements for a certain classification of tenant. And so I'm hopeful that that will be one of your earlier acquisitions, is to make sure that what's there is stabilized and we don't have something that limits.
Could I respond to that, Mayor?
Yes, certainly do.
I think one of the things we learned as well is that there's work yet to be done to complete some of the efforts that have been made, whether it's, you look at, a glaring example is the discussion about Riverfront Park, but yours is also very good. We looked at this as a problem, not just within the Urban Renewal District, but east to west in that area up there. These are, these are issues of flow in and out of the district, and we can't look at them simply as just a problem inside the Urban Renewal District, but that, for instance, investments were made, good investments were made, good people have made risk. We need to come back and say, what else do we need to do? And so some of that is inside that, you know, for instance, the kind of toolbox-y type things, but also you saw some, and, you know, I mean, it's 500,000, we wish it was 5 million, but we're trying to work on them in pieces by district so that people can feel that we are attentive to each of those areas' needs, because they're, I mean, the list goes on, but you've described one, the riverfront's, and another, some of the issues about downtown in the midtown core, you know, what, how are we, how do you look at them all? I mean, we act like they're completely independent, and yet, what can we do to support them so that they have the stability they need to continue to go out and find new tenants? And it could be physical changes, a lot of things.
Okay.
Is that helpful?
Yeah, it is. Thank you.
Okay, I think Counselor Clausen has a question, and then Nanki.
This is great, by the way. Very interesting for me being a new counselor on here. But a question for you regarding the third bridge crossing. I'm curious, your opinion, I assume, you know, my wife and I, when we go downtown, we get a little bit nervous with our two-year-old, so if we got rid of some of the through-town traffic with a third bridge, say, and it was not going through the downtown core, what's your opinion? I mean, I assume that's a good thing for downtown. Yes, you lose some face time, but you get rid of some of the congestion. So is that part of this transportation study that's proposed for the next year, or kind of what's your thoughts on that?
But that's a, that's a big question. I think a lot of it depends, and I think the transportation circulation study, hopefully the third bridge issue will be settled enough that that has some kind of good information to be basing, however that's going to be. I think it depends on the downtown. A lot of downtowns, if you take away that through traffic, it suffers, there's not the visibility, and the retailers suffer. I suspect that, you know, the existing bridges are still going to be there, and so there's going to be a fair amount of that existing traffic. And Salem's 150-something thousand people, and it's a pretty good-sized city in its own right, so I don't think that it would, I personally, without having actually analyzed the situation, that it would suffer from that. It could probably be a good thing.
Yeah, thank you.
Were there other questions from counselors? Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Nanki.
You just keep jumping over me.
I'm sorry. No, no, no.
Thanks for the presentation tonight. I don't think there's much in there that we haven't known we needed to wrap in, so it's good we incorporated the majority of those. The one piece that's different, and I see a lot of potential angst, is the demonstration block project. Can you discuss something about the criteria? Because does everybody on the block face have to? Are they going to apply as a block? There's tax implications, there's potential economic, if everyone is required to provide some kind of capital.
Yeah. Let me explain a little further. It's more of a, it doesn't require property owners to do anything. It's more of taking the existing programs and some new programs and marketing it to a targeted area. So based on the criteria for selecting the block, which, we brainstormed a couple ideas in the process, you know, maybe focusing on a block in the historic district, maybe focusing on one that there's going to be a private investment nearby that you want to reward and build upon, kind of like Jim was saying. And then it's become staff's responsibility to go out there, knock on doors, and try and introduce and encourage as much participation from the property owners as possible. The reason, the rationale behind it was that we saw that there had been a lot of investments in and around downtown, but a lot of them have been kind of scattered. And although that does create energy in a lot of places, it also prevents that critical mass from taking place, and sometimes you lose, you dilute the effect. And so through a kind of a proactive approach of saying, well, this year, it's, we're going to put as much energy as we possibly can with the property owner's participation into this area, work on the street level, work on the facade level, work on the interior level, so that the citizen or the patron walking by the street can tell, it's obvious, wow, this is a, this block is on the map all of a sudden, there are two new restaurants, there's three new facades, they did something on the sidewalk, and then the next year, you carry it on from there, and that's the idea.
It also responds to some of the feedback we heard from business owners who have a lot of ideas and who have said, you know, why couldn't we try this? And, or, a whole bunch of us would like to get together and do this. But there's, it's a kind of a risk-reward thing, that we don't have a program, and so I think this will help that. But I agree, there's a lot of pieces to it. But it does, one of the things we learned as well is that maybe we need to go in and focus some of that towards a real intent, changing the facades again, or getting to historical facades in the historic district, or daylighting in the midtown district, or some of those ideas that you hear about over and over again. And the only way to go test that is to see, how much interest is there in there, and what could we apply to that interest to actually move the mark? And that's the idea.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see how that one pans out, because there's some people that, well, come on, my block is less, and you'll get more of an increase if we do this block versus one that's kind of almost there, and, well, I don't want my taxes to go up, so.
Yeah.
Could be fascinating.
Got to try.
Other counselors, questions? Okay. I have a question, and this actually was one that I voiced, because I was on the downtown Riverfront Urban Renewal Board and was on this subcommittee, and I was very appreciative of the work that staff did and that our consultants did, and the other committee members as well. I want to crucially examine the opportunity to increase the property values in the north downtown area, and I think we need to keep our eye on that, and I am pleased to see that in the report, there are evaluation processes, but I have not seen a projection yet from the Leland Group or from the board, the group, whether an X amount of investment will return Y amount of property, increased property value. Is there a plan somewhere in your work to begin to make some of those forecasts?
Couple things. One, getting down into very details of that, that would be a part of the housing strategy, but we did do a kind of a broad assessment where we looked at the development capacity of the north downtown district, and we made some assumptions based on market conditions about how much housing could be accommodated. And that's one of the numbers I quoted earlier about the 170, oh, I better, before I say it, I better be right. it, I better be right.
Seventy-four million yields, 136 million.
It is, here we go. Yeah, a potential build-out of about $175 million in that district, which is an increase in tax value of about 136 million over what's there today.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's what we would see as the leverage opportunity. We haven't programmed out all of the public investments that'll be need to, to create that leverage. That's part of what would happen in the investment strategy, is drilling down to that very specific level. But that's what we see as the opportunity for leverage.
Right. And I want to make a couple comments with regard to housing. I would hope that we keep our eye on the fact that there are many people who are in market rate and, and lower-priced housing in that area. And I would hope that we don't become the kind of city that fuels the gentrification by destroying the mix in our, in our neighborhoods in a, in an effort to strive for top value. So I just want to hold that as a value in our community. So that's, that was a thought I had.
Absolutely.
Okay. Other thoughts or questions from counselors, from staff? Okay, all right. Want to thank you. Also, I want to note Carol Smith and Bill Putney are new members on the downtown advisory board for the downtown urban renewal, downtown Riverfront Urban Renewal District. Now that you've sat through this, I want to give you an opportunity. If you wanted to say something, feel free.
I don't think I would. I just started.
Okay. Okay, good. Well, thank you all for being here. Appreciate all the hard work you're doing.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. This work session is closed.
I'm gonna throw my plate away. I don't know. Probably in Ward Three.
I could turn it off.
The slowest mine at work. I like that. Hope they get just turned up. This is shit better. I don't sit down.
Yeah, and then you told me six thirty and then I got here and I thought I was already late, so.
I was eating to it, but, leaving the post desk. So by the time I got there, I was enjoying someone's desk.
Like a ride, boy.
See, a lot of times before the mic goes live, it's a work.
Denise heard that the other night. We were talking about Christmas, we're back here.
Watch out here, man.
Right here.
Sometimes.
We've been here since noon. No, I remember back to the days when I was already asleep.
That was always great. Almost had to take a full day of vacation once a month to be a counselor.
Oh, they, sometimes they went significantly.
Well, and that was a boundary to having people want to be a counselor as well. So that was one of the primary things in the board's committee, was like, get rid of the old lady.
I'm glad we did.
Yeah.
DJ's not here.
Actually, uh.
Now we have a council president that can keep it moving.
Councilman Brad, you should do that. Former Ward Seven.
Wouldn't be bringing up the end of the week.
I was like, the whole time I was.
They flash both lights just about a minute and a half ago. So I don't know what.
That means they're ready.
Not tonight, but we will. I will put up another one.
call the roll.
Commissioner Bennett?
Here.
Commissioner Tesler?
Present.
Commissioner Nanki?
Here.
Commissioner Clausen?
Here.
Commissioner Dickey?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Cannon is absent and in his place, we have guest Commissioner David Cam. Commissioner Clem?
Here.
Commissioner Barco?
Here.
Well, welcome Commissioner Cam. And why don't you take us into, through the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would, would one of the commissioners make a motion to approve the special meeting agenda?
So moved.
Nanki moved. Yeah, I'll let Nanki have, Nanki moved and Dickey seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. And do we have, we have no one listed for public comment. Is there anyone who'd like to talk to the housing authority? All righty, thank you. And we'll go through our action items. And I'm going to start with Commissioner Clausen. Do you want to get us started?
Sure. Are we taking it four point A to start with?
Four point A, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion on this, that we defer this to the, this item to our next meeting. And in so doing, I've got some questions that I'm hoping to get a little bit more detail on and we can.
Second.
There. So I guess that's it.
Commissioner Clausen moves to post, to defer action on this until our February 14th meeting, seconded by Counselor Nanki.
Chair, if I could, I had just mentioned that in additional discussions that we've all had on staff about this topic, I think that it would be good to ask the questions and get the answers we have tonight. But I think there's some additional information that would be useful to council, for council and the housing authority to have before you make the final decision. And there's time in the process to delay that to the 14th meeting.
Okay, thank you. So I have a couple of questions for staff. When I read through the report, I'm definitely getting an education and I have to say, Andy, you've been great. Thank you for answering my questions. And I apologize if I'm a little slow on the startup here. But the questions that I have pertain a lot to what, I'm going to throw out a couple and then you can probably just kind of take them. What's the current debt on the project? What is the projected market value? I know we don't have an appraisal or anything, but kind of what's a guesstimate on the value? And does that value include the capitalization needs? And then what's the projected acquisition cost to the Salem Housing Authority? And how is this, how would the acquisition cost be funded? So that's a few questions. Feel free to ask if you need them run by you again.
That's fine. Can I start with the last one and then maybe we can end up with the first one and you can remind me. The valuation, the valuation of the property, if the housing authority were to involve in a transaction to purchase the property. Valuation is based upon a formula that's set forth in a limited partnership agreement. And that formula specifically is the outstanding debt on the project, which is about 4.8 million plus exit taxes. And we estimate the exit tax, excuse me, we estimate the exit taxes to be zero.
Okay.
The 4.8 million outstanding loans on the property is a combination of three different sources. One is private debt at about $4 million through JP Chase, formerly Washington Mutual. The second source of debt is about $191,000 of homeowners, of home partnership funds, which are federal housing funds that were committed to the project at the time of the inception by the city of Salem, I believe. And finally, there is a portion that is Salem Housing Authority's secured and unsecured loans to Parkway, basically to cash flow operations at times when maintenance was in excess of our reserves, or when the vacancy rates didn't deliver, high vacancy rates weren't delivering the cash flow that we needed to cover our operations from the project itself. So those three sources make up that total 4.8 million. The private debt at 4 million, the underlying value is, we believe somewhere less than there. We think 3.4 to 3.5 million. So the outstanding first position loan is most likely, and I think highly likely, greater than the underlying appraised value today. Now, we believe with capital investment, that that equation will flip around. But I think I, one of the things I think is important to note is that there is very few situations. So in most affordable housing situations, the cost to develop the project is going to be greater than the appraised value of the property. Right? They underwrite restricted income, restricted rents into the underwriting for the debt sizing, and it's going to be less. Were those the questions that you had?
So the projected acquisition cost, yeah, you covered that. So, oh, what's the potential funding sources for us to acquire that as the Salem Housing Authority?
There are conventional resources. For instance, assumption of the current loan, which obviously if the loan is greater than the value, then there'd need to be a little bit of extra equity coming from somewhere. Could be a refinance. There are tools from the state called Oregon Affordable Housing Tax Credits, which basically, in conjunction with the private loan, they buy down the cost of the loan funds by three percentage points. So if you have a 7% loan, they underwrite it a 4% loan. So the amount of cash flow you have stretches a little further to support a little bit more debt. There are, and, and I believe the, the mechanism that we were looking to most closely for this property, if it was being rehabilitated, would be tax credits in a mix of equity and debt both, that would all kind of come together at the same time as a part of a financial package in a normal kind of course, affordable housing, equity investors, private lenders, equity from local and state governmental sources.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At our, our meeting last week, work session, we talked about cost per square foot. Is it possible to bring back information on what, through, you know, low, medium, high-end, private sector, multifamily housing, costs on a per-square basis as well?
Absolutely.
Cause it just seemed like a really high number. A lot of that having to do with the, dealing with the feds and stuff as well, I'm sure. And then, let's see, what was the second one? As far as timing, if interest rates go up, would we be advised to try to make that shift to, to our ownership as soon as possible in the event that interest rates, say, go up by the end of the year, as far as getting the best value on the assumption now versus later?
So as it relates to the interest rate risk of waiting?
Right. Risk of waiting, say, you know, if we apply for grants in April, I think it was, not knowing how long that takes, just kind of an idea of, of timing. And then I'd asked a question at the work session as well, if I might, in regards to utility costs. And you'd, you'd said there was a, a risk-reward matrix of some sort. And just what happens to us as owners if utility rates double in the next five years?
Okay. Are there any further questions on this motion to defer until our next meeting action on this? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No? Okay. Motion passed. Counselor Dickey, this is in your ward. Do you want to make a motion on B? Probably because of the linkage would be to defer as well to the 14th, if that's okay with you.
Say that again. I need to make a motion.
Uh, yeah, it's in your, unless, unless you'd like to have someone else do it.
So, oh, we're on B, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll move staff recommendation.
I think we'd need a motion to defer this to the February 14th meeting. I'm sorry, that was confusing.
Yeah, I'll, I'll move to also defer for B to our next meeting.
Okay, Nanki seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Okay, good. Just one, one final, had a chance to go out to Inglewood East for, Andy, do you want to just speak briefly, very briefly, to what the outcome? This is a first time in the country activity, so I think it's always worth highlighting that kind of success.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Inglewood East multifamily property that the housing authority manages for the Teton Nonprofit Corporation, as you know, received a green retrofit grant of $730,000 in total. And that grant was implemented this past fall. Construction, the construction term we had was 12 months and the project was completed within six months. We knew we were the first green retrofit grant project in the Northwest to close. What we didn't know is that we were also the first one in the country to fin-
as well to the 14th, if that's okay with you?
Say that again. I need to make a motion.
Yeah, it's in your, unless you'd like to have someone else do it.
So, oh, we're on B, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'll move staff recommendation.
I think we'd need a motion to defer this to the February 14th meeting. I'm sorry, that was confusing.
Yeah, I'll move to also defer for B to our next meeting.
Okay, Nanki seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Okay, good. Just one, one final, had a chance to go out to Inglewood East for, Andy, do you want to just speak briefly, very briefly, to what the outcome, this is a first time in the country activity, so I think it's always worth highlighting that kind of success.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Inglewood East multifamily property that the Housing Authority manages for the Teton Nonprofit Corporation, as you know, received a green retrofit grant of $730,000 in total and that grant was implemented this past fall. Construction, the construction term we had was 12 months and the project was completed within six months. We knew we were the first green retrofit grant project in the Northwest to close. What we didn't know is that we were also the first one in the country to finish. And so, as you can imagine, there's a lot of work that goes on in the front end when these programs are being planned at the federal government, but never quite certain how you get out of it at the end. And so we're kind of trying to figure out with the local HUD folks how we close this out. So I don't want to say it's completely closed out, but the project is finished, retainer is paid, contractors have done great work and we're really pleased to have been a part of that with the support of Teton and the Commission, so thank you.
Great, thank you, Andy. That, that was really a good, a good event. I do want to be sure to close on that last motion and let everyone know it passed. And then we have one final agenda item, 4. C. Counselor Claussen, do you want to make that motion?
I'd move staff recommendation.
Seconded by Nanki, any discussion?
I have one, just, yeah, I guess I'll ask the question here, it might be a council question. Just the intent of this was because this was purchased as part of the Battle Creek property and kind of the intent is to hold it as a potential entrance to the park when it's developed. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
This was before my time here? Okay, that's all.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passed. And without any objection, we're adjourned. I want weight.
Hey, it's been a pleasure. We'll see you again in a couple weeks.
Thanks for coming down.
That was definitely my, yeah, that was my work. On the urban renewal?
Yeah. On the, I think it's urban.
Okay. Welcome, everyone. We're opening the meeting for the Urban Renewal Board. This is a special meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency. Will the recorder please call the roll? Board Member Bennett.
Here.
Board Member Tesler.
President.
Board Member Nanki.
Here.
Board Member Claussen.
Here.
Board Member Dickey.
Here.
Board Member Thomas.
Here.
Board Member Cannon is absent and in his place, we have guest Board Member David Cam. Board Member Clem.
Here.
Chair Peterson.
Here. Thank you. The first item on our, our agenda is the approval of special meeting agenda. And Board Member Bennett, would you make a motion to approve the special meeting agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. I move approval of the special meeting agenda for the Urban Renewal Agency for January 24th.
It's, it's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanki to approve the agenda for the special meeting, January 24th, 2011. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
The motion passed. Thank you. Okay. It's time for public comment. I don't see that anyone has signed up for a public comment.
Oh, you've got a different one. Oh, what's this one? Oh, all right, okay. Paperwork will kill you in this. I'm learning. So we don't have anyone signed up for our public comment, but is there anyone here tonight who would like to make a comment during our public comment time? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go along. The action items, would, Board Member Bennett, would you make a motion to take the action items as a consent calendar?
Madam Mayor, I so move.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanki to take the action items as a consent calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, Madam, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. I know there were comments that came up, or questions regarding item C under action items. I wonder if it'd be possible to just have a brief discussion of that?
Counselor Bennett, you would need a motion first, so it's on the floor.
I move, I move staff recommendation. Would that be okay?
Well, you, there are calendars, so you would move the consent calendar.
Okay. I move we pull item 4. C off the calendar. Is that the?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I move, I move approval of the consent calendar and pull item C.
Okay. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanki to approve the consent calendar with taking items 4C off the consent calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Okay. It's time for public comment. I don't see that anyone has signed up for a public comment.
Oh, you've got a different one. Oh, what's this one? Oh, all right, okay. The paperwork will kill you in this. I'm learning. So we don't have anyone signed up for our public comment, but is there anyone here tonight who would like to make a comment during our public comment time? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go along. The action items, would, Board Member Bennett, would you make a motion to take the action items as a consent calendar?
Madam Mayor, I so move.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanki to take the action items as a consent calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, Madam, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. I know there were comments that came up, or questions regarding item C under action items. I wonder if it'd be possible to just have a brief discussion of that?
Counselor Bennett, you would need a motion first, so it's on the floor.
I move, I move staff recommendation. Would that be okay?
Well, you, there are calendars, so you would move the consent calendar.
Okay. I move we pull item 4. C off the calendar. Is that the?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I move, I move approval of the consent calendar and pull item C.
Okay. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanki to approve the consent calendar with taking items 4C off the consent calendar. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries to remove item C from the consent calendar.
Madam Mayor, I, I move staff recommendation on item C.
Counselor Bennett, or Board Member Bennett, you need to move approval of the consent calendar.
Now move approval of the consent.
That's right, and then you'll consider item C.
Want to do it again?
Oh, okay, sorry.
No, it's okay, I, I'll do it. This is becoming a full rewrite of my scripts.
Well, Counselor Bennett, I remember that you've been at the pinnacle, so I know you know about rewriting scripts, so we're okay. Okay, where are we?
I'm going to move staff recommendation for item C.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the staff recommendation for item 4C. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
You want to discuss questions or something else?
Oh, yes, I believe that we have discussion on this question.
Yeah, that's, I made the motion for the purposes of discussion as a courtesy to Counselor Tesler.
Yes, okay. Sorry, Counselor Tesler, I didn't mean to be rushing, okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hopefully it's okay to talk now.
Yes, it is.
Okay, I don't have a script. I had a question about this item and I don't, this, I don't want to appear that I want to put, that I want to be a power master over the Arts Commission, but I would just like to know, is there any way that when they pick art, it's going to be hung or placed or installed or whatever, is there a way that it can be shown to the council before it's put out and mainly just so I can know if I'm going to get 500 emails about it the next day? Just, just, just as a courtesy and also I think this serves a dual purpose and the dual purpose is to show us the art that they're picking, so we can talk about it to people and go and see it and know where it's going to be, because I'm very interested in this Arts Commission and I really want it to be a success. So I think it would help to show us in the community what's happening and what they're looking at and why they selected these things and who the artists are. So that's my other second purpose.
Absolutely, and I appreciate your comments because I too share that. And I know you've worked very hard on the, not only the Arts Commission formation, but on the downtown mural projects, et cetera, and appreciate that. And it sort of makes me think that maybe it would be a good thing at some point to have the Arts Commission have a, maybe a work session with us to, as they have, as they are in the process now of developing their systems and their procedures, so that we learn exactly how they're going to be doing the selection process and how the community can be involved or at least have an opportunity to comment on the art. Is there anything that?
Yes, Sean O'Day is the staff person for the commission, so if you'd like to talk about that process and how that can come back to council for their information.
Happy to do so. Mayor, members of the council, Sean O'Day, Deputy City Manager. Counselor, the direct answer to your question is no, there is nothing currently in the code or in the committee's guidelines that would require that the committee bring their selection decision back to the council. I can certainly, however, share your opinions and thoughts with them. And with respect to their selection guidelines, the committee was just formed this last fall. One of their first orders of business is to adopt a set of bylaws for the conduct of their meetings and they're going through that process right now. They are also in the process of drafting their selection criteria, which under the code needs to come back to the council for the council's approval. And so that would be the, the point in which I think the council could have a discussion with the committee about when check-in might occur, when one, you know, otherwise would not.
Fine, okay, is that good? Okay, thanks. Thank you, Counselor, Board Member Tesler, for bringing that issue up. I think that was a good discussion on that. Okay. Would any of the board members? I apologize. So we need to take a vote on the motion to accept the recommended staff recommendation for item 4C. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Would any of the board members like to address the information report, which is in your packet? Okay, hearing none. Then do we adopt that? If we don't, okay, all right, thank you. Unfinished business. Board Member Dickey, would you like to make a motion for the agenda item 6A under unfinished business?
Yeah, I move that this item go back to the Boards and Commissions Committee for further consideration.
I didn't see who seconded, I'm sorry. Counselor Bennett, Board Member Bennett, thank you. All right. It's been moved and seconded, moved by Board Member Dickey and seconded by Board Member Bennett to refer this back to, or to?
Refer back to the Boards and Commissions.
Refer this back to the Boards and Commissions Committee of the council. All those in favor, say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, do I need discussion? I'm sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, I just wanted to explain why I'm doing this. Since I made this motion, I made the motion in December for this group to be able to make these appointments. There's no hurry with this particular board, they don't meet again until March and hopefully the new council and will have that opportunity to make these appointments. But since I've made this motion, I've had a few conversations with staff just about our whole Boards and Commissions appointment process and just trying to really be clear about the process and hoping that those who come and apply for Boards and Commissions are very clear about the process. And I'd like to have a little more discussion about that in our Boards and Commissions Committee and then maybe eventually bring it back to the council.
Fine, okay, I appreciate those comments and I also appreciated the opportunity to be able to talk with you and I know you spoke with other counselors as well on this issue. Appreciate that work. Okay. Yes, Counselor Claussen?
Just a quick question, is this a mayoral-approved position? Or is this from the Boards and Commissions?
No, no, it's approved by the council, by the board, the board, the Urban Renewal Board. Yeah, yeah, okay. All right. So it's been moved and seconded to defer the decision on this appoint, on appointments to this. Refer it back to the committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Okay, all right. The public hearing regarding exemption from competitive bidding is open. Will the recorder please introduce it?
The Urban Renewal Agency Board, as a local contract review board for the Salem Urban Renewal Agency, will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony on the draft findings for an exemption from the competitive bidding requirements regarding the utility conversion project located at the intersection of Portland Road Northeast and Hyacinth Street Northeast.
Is there a staff presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Agency Board Members. My name is Brian Martin. I'm the Assistant City Engineer in the Public Works Department. And as we get this started, I'd first like to enter the staff report into the record. Of course, this request is to adopt a resolution that contains findings in support of an exemption from the competitive bidding process and authorizes direct negotiations to bury franchise utilities at Portland Road Northeast and Hyacinth Street Northeast. You'll see the map on your screens and up on the board. That gives you a good idea where the project area is. The north, of course, is pointed in the up direction. A little background on the project. The Urban Renewal Agency Board previously identified the Portland Road corridor as a priority project. A significant element of the project includes burying franchise utilities to improve the aesthetics and the appeal of the corridor, thereby inviting redevelopment and new development in the North Gateway Urban Renewal Area. Phase one of the project from Myrtle Street to the Union Pacific Railroad underpass was completed in 2002 and included similar utility undergrounding projects. Phase two of the project from the Union Pacific Railroad underpass to I-5 is mostly designed, however, funding was not available to complete the project at this time. However, with voter-approved street bond funding for a project on Hawthorne Avenue and Hyacinth Street in the vicinity of Portland Road, an opportunity presented itself this last couple of years to complete a portion of the Portland Road project at the Hyacinth Street intersection. On September 13, 2010, the URA approved funding to convert the overhead franchise utilities at Hyacinth Street to an underground system for that portion of the phase-two project adjacent to the Hyacinth Street, Street Bond project. The staff report contains a complete list of the findings and rationale. Rather than repeat all of that at this time, I just want to take a few moments to highlight some of the key issues. First of all, the nature of the work involved with burying franchise utilities is very complex and specialized and in cases with power lines can also be dangerous. Power companies typically lead this type of construction as the work requires specialized expertise and coordination with other utility providers in a joint utility trench. Utilizing a joint utility trench minimizes the cost to all utilities with the project. PGE happens to be the only power company at the site and they're the most experienced franchise utility in managing, coordinating, and inspecting these types of projects. PGE is successful- complex and specialized, and in cases of power lines, can also be dangerous. Power companies typically lead this type of construction, as the work requires specialized expertise and coordination with other utility providers in a joint utility trench. Utilizing a joint utility trench minimizes the cost to all utilities with the project. PGE happens to be the only power company at the site, and they're the most experienced franchise utility in managing, coordinating, and inspecting these types of projects. PGE has successfully managed and completed similar projects, including the Phase 1 portion I mentioned previously in 2002. With the staff report, PGE would also be required to competitively select contractors from their list of approved contractors qualified to perform franchise utility underground work through PGE's own bidding process. Thus, we'd still get competitive bids for the work. And of course, PGE would be required to meet the provisions required of all contractors engaged in public improvement projects. So, that's a brief summary, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions from members of the board? Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. And just had a question for the competitive bidding, if it's already going to be through PGE, then why wouldn't you just contact the companies directly to get that bidding?
They have a pre-approved list of specialized contractors. In addition, someone needs to manage the overall project, and do all the coordination and inspection. With all the different utilities involved, PGE typically does that type of work for these undergrounding projects. So, it's more than just construction, it's also all the overall coordination, management, and inspection.
I apologize to my fellow board members, I forgot to say that there is no one signed up to speak on this as a public member, but is there anyone in the audience today that would like to speak about this issue, before I take questions from the board members? Okay, thank you. Board Member Clem, and then Board Member Dickey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Brian, good presentation. Just want to confirm, will the work that occurs at here be subject to likely prevailing wage?
Yes.
Even though PGE is doing it?
Yes. We'd come back with an intergovernmental agreement with PG once this gets approved, and that would be a requirement of that intergovernmental agreement.
Just the same as it would if we competitively bid it?
Yes.
Okay, and we know for a fact that no one else can really competitively bid for this. PG's the only firm that can amalgam all of these different kinds of services.
For the franchise utility specifically.
Yeah.
Board Member Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. Just curious, you say that this will, number two says this exemption will result in substantial cost savings to the agency. Do you have any idea ballpark of how much savings this will result in?
Yeah, we did a brief estimate, and we're expecting somewhere around the neighborhood of $50,000. And if you took some other type of management firm to manage a project like this, the risks would be increased. And we kind of estimated out what the cost per day the contractor will be, the efforts put forth during that day is about $7,000 a day. So, if you have any issues come up that aren't taken care of by an expert, you know, per day costs could get excessive.
Any further questions? Yes, Board Member Tesler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have to tell you, just do this, because I travel through this area a lot, and I think this would really, really make a big difference in the way this area looks, and just the whole streetscape. So, I just want you to just do this tomorrow. I don't care how it gets done, just do it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Tesler. Okay, any other questions from board members, comments? All right, the public hearing is now closed. And Board Member Dickey, this is in your ward, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Board Member Dickey, and seconded by Board Member Tesler, to approve the staff recommendation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I see no further, I see no further business to come before the Urban Renewal Board, and we are adjourned. And I will just say quickly to staff, to staff and to board members, counselors, I thought that we would take a break sometime after 7:30, a short break, so we'll kind of see where there's a time in the agenda to do that. Okay? We could, well, if we could get out of here by 7:30, then we wouldn't have to take a break at 7:30. Okay. I had a feeling that we weren't going to get out of here by 7:30. Okay. I'd like to call the meeting to order for the council meeting, January 24. We're now in session. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Bennett?
Here.
Counselor Tesler?
Present.
Counselor Nanki?
Here.
Counselor Claussen?
Here.
Counselor Dickey?
Here.
Counselor Thomas?
Here.
Counselor Cannon has abs, and in his place, we have guest Counselor David Cam.
Here.
Counselor Clem?
Here.
Mayor Peterson?
Here.
Okay. We have no proclamations or presentations this evening, so we'll move right on to reports of boards, commissions, committees, and presentations by outside agencies. And tonight, we have guests from the Historic Grand Theater. Joan Bennett, I believe, is here to speak. Welcome, we appreciate you being here, and you have three minutes, and there will be an amber light that shows up at the podium. Pardon me? Three, oh, I'm sorry, it's five minutes. And the amber light will come on at the end of four, and then you have another minute.
Okay, we are media challenged here for a moment.
Okay.
Okay. I do represent the board of the Friends of the Historic Grand Theater. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and counselors, for inviting us to speak. I, we're theater, so I'm hoping this will be a short and hopefully entertaining presentation. So, bear with me. Our theater is a remarkable little gem tucked in the heart of downtown Salem. Many of you may have known it from its long history. And, so, once upon a time, way back in 1902, the city of Salem had a little gem of an opera house on Court Street. And it did all classical, and then as times changed, it expanded to vaudeville, movie theater, house of worship, and yes, some of you remember it from its wrestling days. And then it was a rock and roll venue, complete with mosh pit. And unfortunately, as the years went by, people were not kind to this lovely gem. But, we have managed to revive it to another perfect gem for 2011 and beyond. So, it has gone through a lot of changes, and our owners were very farsighted, and managed to renovate the exterior and the main theater a couple of years ago. And prior TOT grants have actually allowed us to revamp our green room where our performers hang out. This is what it looked like early in the construction phase, and this is what it looks like now, after renovation. We have a small kitchen, two very nice dressing rooms now, and in that little kitchen, we're able to provide meals to our performers before their performances, from some of our finest restaurants and local chefs. There's not much time between soundcheck and performance for going out, so we bring Salem to them. Also, in this past year, we've been able to adorn our little gem with a lot of jewels of performances. These are just a sample of some of the artists that have come through, regional, nationally-known artists as well, some locals. We provide diverse and quality entertainments, from acapella to small stage plays. Our theater is very intimate. We seat about 350 people, a little over 350. It's the right size for a very intimate theater, for a very up-close and personal interaction with all our artists, of national, regional, and local artists that come through. And we also provide educational and informative events for the community and our visitors. We've had quite a diverse selection. One of them that's very well-known is our monthly progressive film series that's held in our theater. We have documentary films that cause one to think, and consider, and be open to new ideas. And then, we finish with discussions by experts in the field, and one such expert was Bill Bradbury at one point. We also hosted, or co-hosted with the League of Women Voters and Salem Weekly, the mayoral forum not too long ago, that some of you may remember. Just one example of some of our public service events that go on at the theater. We also have a very popular, and one of the few truly family-friendly evening entertainments, our monthly musical sing-alongs, where we join voices and sing along with some of our favorite classical musicals. And it is a total hoot. In fact, some of the audience will also come in costume, not required, but encouraged, it helps the flavor. And by the way, it continues this Thursday, if you want to join us for, and sing along with Getting to Know You for the King and I, that is going on this week. We also, we're very excited about our second annual Acapella Night, where we have a lot of fine local high school and college acapella groups performing for us, including On the Rocks, that was lucky enough, I think they placed fourth in NBC's Sing-Off competition recently, so they're headlining our acts. So, we have many plans for 2011 and on into 2012. And although we're quite viable in providing entertainments locally, we still need some help to do some of the larger functions that we would like to do. So, a couple of items on our to-do list is, we would like to further enhance the historic value of the theater in the downtown area and the region itself by installing a replica of the original 1902 sign for the Grand Theater, to add a little vintage touch to our entrance. We would also like to continue to provide our visitors and citizens with quality entertainment and education and informative events. We'd also like to continue to be able to provide the community with an intimate facility, so that different events, public and private events, have a venue that is viable, from weddings to school graduations, Howard Street School graduation took place in our theater, meetings, business meetings and all around, and other family entertainments. And we would love to be able to improve the acoustic separation. Historic buildings were not designed for modern acoustics and equipment, and we so far have been walking a very thin line, trying to provide entertainments and being good neighbors to our other historic neighbors downtown. And we would like to improve the acoustic separation, which would allow us to increase the number and also diversify the types of entertainment we can hold, and still be a good neighbor to our, to the folks around and about.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. We appreciate your appearance and the information that you've brought to us this evening. Are there any questions from counselors? Did you?
We'll be there on the left.
Thank you very much, come and sit.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for the time.
Counselor Bennett, would you make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Yes, Mayor, I move approval --
I'm sorry, wait a moment, I'm sorry, I've done this wrong. Okay. Our next item of business is public comment, and we do have an individual signed up. Is that this one? Okay. Mrs. Ida Laffkey is signed up for the speaker's roster. Mrs. Laffkey, would you like to come and address the council?
My name is Ida Laffkey. I reside at 429 Court Street, Northeast Salem, Oregon 97301. It's a pleasure to be in front of the City Council this evening to speak on Marion Parkade LLC project, if it so needs any questions or answers. I believe the letter submitted by Cherie Wargren, on behalf of Urban Development, kind of brings out the highlights of my things to address, whether it's, you know, addressing the financing and what we're doing, and feedback on legislature, I believe it's all there. So, really, I'm here if there's any questions, or concerns, or any explanatory expansion on my letter to City Council.
Okay. Are there any questions of Ms. Laffkey? Okay. Thank you very much for coming down tonight. We appreciate the information you sent to us, appreciate you coming down, thank you.
I appreciate it, it's a fun project, if it happens, thanks.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, now we'll move to the consent calendar. Counselor Bennett?
Madam Mayor, I move the consent calendar with additions and the following polls. 4.2D by Counselor Nanki, 4.3C by Counselor Bennett.
Okay. Then Counselor Bennett, will you make a motion to accept the consent calendar?
I move acceptance then of the consent calendar.
Okay, is there a second? With the two polls, right.
That is the most needed.
Yes. I'm sorry.
Let me do it again.
Yeah, okay.
The whole thing?
Yes.
Okay. I move the consent calendar with additions, with the following polls. 4.2D by Counselor Nanki, and 4.3E by Counselor Bennett.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Dickey to approve the consent calendar minus the two items that are being pulled, 4.2D and 4.3E. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, we will go to special orders of business to address the pulled agenda items. Counselor Nanki?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I pulled 4.2D because it is the same as the issue that was in front of the Housing Authority, so if Counselor Dickey wants to make the motion, since it's in her ward, I'm more than happy to let her do that, or I can just make myself.
Counselor Dickey?
I'll do it, I'll try to get it right this time. I move that we defer 4.2D until the --
February 14.
Till February 14.
Sorry?
Okay. It's been moved by Counselor Dickey and seconded by Counselor Nanki to defer action on this until the meeting on February 14. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. And the second item is 4.3E. Counselor Bennett, would you like to address that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move the staff recommendation. Mayor, the reason I pulled this was to just ask sort of a fundamental question. We're moving from our traditional RFP process to, which would be a call for bids and a more competitive process, to a description of this as a special procurement process. And this is for the Economic Improvement District Administrator in the downtown area, and I thought it would be helpful to just have an explanation of why we would move from one, from a competitive to a non-competitive process, and what you had in mind.
Yes, I'll give a brief explanation, and then I'll turn it over to John Wells, the interim Urban Development Director. We initially had anticipated, because this is a time for renewal of the Economic Improvement District, we had anticipated having an RFP process to have people who might be interested in administering contracts come back to City Council with their proposal, and City Council make the decisions. During the last couple of months, Cherie Wargren, who is in Urban Development Department, that has, this is one of her assignments, has been meeting with a number of stakeholders and interest groups within the downtown area. And it became clear that there are differences of opinion about how to move forward, and we weren't sure that we would be able to write an RFP, actually, that would really get at the heart of what people, the projects, and what people want to see happen there. And so, are making this recommendation that we do a special procurement process, and ask people from the downtown who are interested in this to come together, to decide what their projects are, what they're interested in proposing, and then bring that proposal to City Council. And John, would you like to add any more detail to that?
I think that John Wells, the Director of Urban Development, I think that summarizes the thinking behind it. As Lynda described, when we looked at the process with the RFP that we had outlined, and looked at the special procurement process, I think -- and looked at the special procurement process, I think we, and after talking with the community, I think we came to the conclusion that this was probably the most efficient way to successfully select an administrator. The other process that we had in place was probably going to take longer and probably didn't have the, we didn't believe had the surety in it that we would be able to secure that. Now, this isn't a guarantee either, but we think given the timeframe that we have to work with, that this would, will get us there and get us the product we need for the duration.
Thank you. I just want to underscore that, sort of the surety here, the certainty that might be associated with this, that it would be unfortunate to not have this Economic Improvement District, which is paid for by the people who own property in the district area, not by the taxpayers of Salem, but not to have this pass because they're not happy with the way it's configured. And this sort of gives everyone a chance to configure it, if I understand it correctly, in a way that will attract the most support from the people who are paying the tab on this thing. So that seemed very positive. And I think also in light of comments from the Chamber of Commerce about their concerns, I felt like this had helped address the concerns that they had given us about continuation of this process. So I just appreciate finding this kind of solution. It sort of meets that test of can we get people to work together, and this seems to give us that opportunity.
Thank you, Counselor Bennett. Are there other councilors? Yes, Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too am concerned that we're taking this out of competitive bidding, and we're going to put it into a special procurement. Maybe somebody from staff can help me understand, are we just going to let the downtown folks come together and then form one group, and then we're just going to give the contract to that one group? Help me understand the pieces about which we're talking. I'm not comfortable with special procurement.
Yes, that is essentially it, but there are more steps in the process. So we would be laying out the requirements, and Cherie Wargren, you might want to come to the podium so you can talk more specifically about the steps. And then when we have, when people who are interested in the downtown work together, to put together a proposal that meets the criteria, then that's what would come to city council. Cherie, could you go over the, in a little more detail?
What you said is, Cherie Wargren, Downtown Revitalization Manager, basically what's before you tonight would be if and when an organization comes forward for consideration, we would put out all the criteria or the expectations. And again, I sort of memorialized those in the staff report, gave you an example of those that are in Chapter 44, which are requirements, and then some additional recommendations that staff would have. But again, we would build that criteria when in fact an organization comes in and we have a reason to do a special procurement.
So council would then be selecting from, say, five organizations? They would all make their presentation, and the council would select the EID administrator?
The special procurement process does have a public carrying element to it, is my understanding. No, it does not, okay.
Counselor Clem, the way this would work is staff first has to make a request to the purchasing administrator to do this contract as a special procurement. That request has to outline how the procurement would occur, and so that would include what they're looking for in the contractor. That special procurement then, process has to then be approved by the city manager. And after it's been approved by the city manager, notice that the special procurement is published in the Statesman, and there's a protest period that follows. And then following that protest period, the city can enter into direct negotiations, you know, following whatever special procurement process has been identified. And for instance, if the special procurement process says, you know, one entity that reflects X number of property or property and taxpayers has, is, will be selected, then that's how that process will work, will work out. At this point in time, I don't believe that the process has actually been finalized, but it will be finalized and then approved by the city manager.
And that's what I'm after, city manager Norris is, I would almost rather council reserve the right to allow the city manager to go forward with that special procurement when we know what that special procurement is, because I'm sitting here tonight not understanding the whole process.
I think that Counselor Clem, what a-
Would it be competitive or not?
An appropriate motion would be, prior to the submission of the special procurement process to the city manager, that it be brought back to the city council for review.
Sure.
Yeah, I'd like to offer that amendment if I could.
Yeah, I view that as friendly amendment if seconded.
Please, thank you. I would, I would offer counsel amendment to that motion, that that, prior to being released by the city manager, that it come back to city council for approval.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to accept, we have a motion on the floor from Counselor Clem, that the, that the recommendation of staff to provide a special procurement process would come back to council? Am I saying that right?
That would be an amendment to the main motion. So the main motion is to use a special procurement subject to city council, and the motion, if approved, would subject that special procurement process to city council review prior to approval by the city manager.
Okay, that's your motion. All right, that's the motion we have on the floor. Is there a second to that motion?
Counselor Bennett.
Oh, Counselor Bennett has seconded the amendment to that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The motion carries. That's the amendment to the motion carries, okay.
So now you go back to the main motion.
Go back to the main motion, okay. So the main motion, with all those in favor of the motion, the main motion as amended, say aye, or, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay? That motion carries. Thank you. We have no unfinished business to come before the council this evening. Would any of the councilors like to address the information reports that were in your packets? Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Mayor. I had just one, I, on the council goals update, 7B, I just wanted to ask about the status of quiet zones. It is one of our goals, it mentions we're on track for them, but there are a series of projects which, as you might imagine, remain of great interest to several of us, so I thought I'd just check in with you on the status of those projects.
Certainly. If I may, Mayor, Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. Thank you, Counselor. We are on track, in fact, we've left, we've visited a couple of stations that are on our way. Our design on the project is about halfway done, and I'll just remind council that we're looking at a number of safety improvements along the Union Pacific Railroad corridor, and these include, and I'll just, I'll just name them, Sunny View, Madison, Market, D, Marion Center, Chameca, Court, State, and Mill. And there are safety improvements at each of those locations funded by the Streets and Bridges bond issue. We've completed the initial design, we've submitted them to the Oregon Department of Transportation Rail Division, they have commented on them, we are addressing their comments. Once that is finalized, ODOT Rail will issue the order that approves those, and then the Union Pacific Railroad has an opportunity to comment. They have not commented yet, but that's, that's just standard procedure for this kind of project. We did coordinate with them early on, so we feel comfortable that there won't be any issues with that. Our hope is that that order will be issued about the middle of February. Our intent is to bid this project in late spring for construction, late summer. So it's really fairly quick work, so we should be done, you know, late summer, early fall. Once that is completed, then we can start the next phase, which is really what the community is hoping for, which is the quiet zone designation. So once those are in place, then we will submit our application for the quiet zone designation next year.
So quiet by Christmas, is that?
By Christmas of 2013.
Really, how soon do you, I mean, how soon could people expect the quiet to be due?
It'd probably be sometime in 2012, realistically. I mean, we, we have to submit, that's something that then ODOT Rail has to consider, and the Federal Railroad Administration has to consider. So, so obviously, they were successful up in Portland Metro with their commuter rail, they did $3 million worth of safety improvements. We're budgeted for $1.2 million of safety improvement, but given their recent success, we anticipate that we'll have similar success.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez, appreciate that report. Okay, moving on for public hearings, we have no public hearings, and we have no first or second readings of ordinances this evening. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Tesler?
I hate to do this, but I think there's a Scrivener's error on item G. That particular site is, I believe, not in Cessna. I believe it is in Can Do.
I'm sorry, which, which one is that?
It's, okay, item G, Pringle Creek Urban Renewal Area, Salmon Run Loan Assignment, Ward Two. That's not in Cessna. That particular building is not in Cessna.
Oh, it was on the consent calendar, we'll correct that in a minute.
I think it's either Scan or Can Do.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. Good catch, all right. Okay, we have no public hearings, we have no first or second readings of ordinances, we have no pub, no one signed up for public comment this evening. And new business? I don't think we're going to need to, I think we're really on a roll here, unless you really want one. Okay. We have no, no new business items. There are no mayor's or councillor's items. We are adjourned.